Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Welcome to the May 9, 2022 Exeter Select Board Meeting. We welcome those of you in attendance, those watching at home on TV. I'd like to say good evening to my colleagues on the board and respective town staff and all of you at home. I'm going to start by introducing the board. To my right is Selectwoman Levy Roundtree Olaf. Good evening.
Good evening.
And to my left is our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
And Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
We also have Molly Cowan, who is participating via Zoom. Good evening, Selectwoman Cowan.
Good evening, everyone.
And Selectwoman Cowan, for the record, could you state why you're unable to attend the meeting in person and that you are alone in the room? And if not, who is in the room with you?
Yes, I am quarantining because somebody in my household has COVID, and I have been a close contact of that person, and there is nobody in the room.
Great, thank you. And I hope he's feeling better. To my left, our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And I'm Nico Papakostandis. For those of you on TV, if you can't see already, we have a packed house in the Novak Room. We have standing room only out in the hallway. And I hope that we have at least this many people at deliberative session in February.
Right. This is the pitch.
See, we can fill the room. We don't have any board interviews this evening, so I'll start with public comment. If anybody has any comment for the board, now is the time. However, if your comment is pertaining to anything on the agenda, we ask you wait until the agenda item comes up, so I'll pause for a moment.
Chair, can I ask a question before? When we get to the item at hand about the pickleball discussion, if people have submitted letters, are we asking that they read those letters? Are we asking that they give, like, if they want to present in front of the board? What's the protocol for that?
So what we're going to do is everything that's been submitted electronically is in our packet this evening. When we get to that discussion item, I'm going to open it up, talk about why we're having it again as a discussion item, open it up for the board to have a discussion, and then we will open it up to public comment. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak, and I'll go through everything when we get to that discussion item. If anybody wants to read their emails, that's fine, but everything is in the packet for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And last call on public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to proclamations and recognitions. This evening, we are honored and privileged to swear in a new police officer, Mr. Arthur Joseph, and also swear in Tad Seirad, who's being promoted to sergeant. So with that, Chief Pullen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to observe two ceremonies for the Exeter Police Department. First, we're going to welcome our newest officer, Arthur Joseph, and then we'll witness the promotional oath for Theodore, or Tad Seirad, to patrol sergeant. After the ceremonies, we'll take some photos outside. I just want to take a minute to thank the Select Board, Rustine, Town Manager, and our Town Clerk, Andy Kohler, for taking time tonight to recognize these two special individuals. For Arthur, it's been about a two-year process trying to onboard him, between his path to citizenship and his recent year-long deployment overseas, and he remained dedicated and persistent throughout. He was born and raised in Puerto Prins, Haiti. He came to the United States in 2015 and began working towards his career in law enforcement with a position in security, and then as a correctional officer with the Stratford County Sheriff's Office. He's also a member of the New Hampshire Army National Guard and recently returned from a year-long deployment to Cape Town this past December. Arthur studied business management in Haiti and speaks several different languages, including Haitian Creole, English, Spanish, and Latin. Arthur and his wife Lindsay were renting in Exeter and just recently are in the process of purchasing their first home in Sandown. Arthur will enter into the Police Academy on June 6, 2022, and I will speak about Tad. After this, we're going to go through both ceremonies, so there'll be... Tad grew up in Clarksville, New Hampshire. He received a Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology from the University of New Hampshire in 2013. And there he is.
There he is.
He's shorter than me, don't know. He joined the Exeter Police Department in December of 2017. Since the start of his career with us, Tad has always been eager to learn more, do better, and participate within the department in various roles. He's currently a certified police motorcycle operator, a defensive tactics instructor, a firearms instructor, and a field training officer. He and his wife Jordan are also living in their first home, where they have made roots here in Exeter. So now we'll witness their swearing in and taking of the oaths by Andy Kohler.
Good morning, stand here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Arthur Joseph...
I, Arthur Joseph.
...of Stratton, New Hampshire.
Of Stratton, New Hampshire.
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will bear faithful and true allegiance...
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance...
...to the United States of America...
To the United States of America.
...and the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
...and will support the constitutions thereof.
And will support the constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Arthur Joseph...
I, Arthur Joseph.
...do solemnly and sincerely...
Do solemnly and sincerely.
...swear and affirm...
Swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
...discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
...all the duties incumbent on me...
All the duties incumbent on me.
...as a police officer...
As a police officer.
...according to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
...agreeable to the rules and regulations...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
...of the constitution...
Of the constitution.
...and enforce the laws...
And enforce the laws.
...of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Arthur. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Theodore Seirad...
I, Theodore Seirad.
...of Exeter, New Hampshire.
Of Exeter, New Hampshire.
...do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will bear faithful and true allegiance...
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance...
...to the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
...and the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
...and will support the constitutions thereof.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Theodore Seirad...
I, Theodore Seirad.
...do solemnly and sincerely...
Do solemnly and sincerely.
...swear and affirm...
Swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
...discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
...all the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
...as a police sergeant...
As a police sergeant.
...according to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
...agreeable to the rules and regulations...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
...of the constitution...
Of the constitution.
...and enforce the laws...
And enforce the laws.
...of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Got to try this again.
Our next order of business this evening is to approve two sets of minutes, the first of which is from the regular Select Board meeting of April 25, 2022, 2022, rather. And I first ask if there are any amendments or revisions to the minutes. Seeing none, that I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of April 25, 2022. Madam Clerk, we must do this via roll call this evening.
Second.
Selectwoman Cowan. Sorry.
I.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
I.
Selectwoman Belanger.
I.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board special meeting minutes of April 28, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second and discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Cowan.
I.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
I.
Selectwoman Belanger.
I.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, however, I regret we have two resignations, the first of which is Kristin Osterwood, who is resigning from the Conservation Commission. And I would entertain a motion to accept her resignation.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Cowan.
I.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
I.
Selectwoman Belanger.
I.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and we thank Kristin for her work on the ConCom. And also to accept this evening the resignation of Kathy Corson from the Housing Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
I.
Selectwoman Belanger.
I.
Selectwoman Cowan.
I.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and we thank Kathy for her work on the Housing Advisory Committee. Okay, next, we're going to get into our discussion items, the first of which is a continuation of a discussion that the board first had back in late March when Greg Beeson, Park and Rec Director, brought forward a proposal for the Select Board to approve acceptance of funding that would go towards permanently altering three of the tennis courts at the Park and Rec facility at Four Hampton Road. After discussion with Mr. Beeson, this had been the first that the board had heard of this, and I think the members of the board had some questions, had some concerns about the process of how that had transpired, the fact that we hadn't heard anything about it, and the immediacy to which an answer was needed. So we did pause that, and unfortunately, we had to reschedule once, but we are here this evening for the board to take that matter up again. In our packet, which is available on the website, you will find many, many, many emails and correspondence from folks, both for and against, for lack of a better term, or just offering up some other suggestions. We also have a presentation that was put forward by folks who have been behind the fundraising for this. All of that is available online and in our packet. What I'd like to do this evening is I'd like the board to continue their conversation. We've had an opportunity to meet with folks. We've had an opportunity to go over all of the materials in the packet, formulate some thoughts and ideas, so the board will continue their discussion. I will open it up after the board has preliminarily discussed the project. We'll open it up for public comment. Anybody and everybody who's a resident of the town of Exeter that wishes to speak tonight will be able to speak tonight. We ask that when you get to the podium, you give your name and your address for the record. This is not a referendum about pickleball or tennis. They're both great sports.
And squash.
Tennis and squash.
Thank you.
That'll be a discussion item for another night, but anyway. You know, tennis has been around for a long, long time. Pickleball is becoming one of the nation's fastest-growing sports, and I think that everybody in this room agrees. So that this is not a referendum as to pickleball or tennis, the conversation tonight is how can the town of Exeter allow both sports to be played by the folks in our community that want to play them? And I think that that was kind of the end discussion of the board back in March, is that we should be able to find room for everybody to be able to play what they want to play, when they want to play it. That's part of Parks and Rec. That's part of being in a community, and we're charged with trying to find the best way to go about doing that that falls within the policies and procedures of the town. And it's difficult when folks work hard to raise money. You never want to say no to money, but we need to look at what's best for the overall community. So again, when you get up to speak, I know everybody's passionate about both sports, but if you could keep your discussion towards the project at hand, again, everybody and anybody that wants to speak will be able to speak. We do ask that, through the discussion, if you want to speak again, we allow everybody to at least speak once first. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the board. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
I'm lucky that I get to sit up here, and Nico can only cut me off so quickly. I will briefly just tell a quick story about the story of pickleball and tennis. I am a racket supporter, so I have an appreciation for both pickleball and tennis. I have a pickleball court painted on my driveway. This was a key during COVID for survival, right? There were a lot of things that you couldn't do that were indoors, and pickleball was one of them. So I say this to say that in the discussions that are about to take place, I want everyone to understand that I, as a member of the Select Board, understand how great pickleball is. I understand the importance of creating community as pickleball players. I used to drive down during the winter, and we would shovel a court when it would snow just in order to play pickleball, because you couldn't do anything indoors during the peak of COVID. So I get it. This is not a surprise that the room is as filled as it is. At the same time, I'm also someone who plays tennis, and I understand the importance of having courts and space and all of that. So I say this to say that I'm looking forward to the discussions that we have in the next couple of hours. I see a lot of folded papers in hand, so I'm looking forward to the discussions. I hope that we can all be listening to each other and really figure out a way to make this happen, because I think it's essential for our community to have something that works well. So I'll say that as a preface to what's about to come and pass it over to any other Select Board members who have any comments.
Selectwoman Gilman.
I have, thanks, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, who's very eloquent in racket sports, and you have to include racquetball, which is indoors, so.
Yes.
I, too, am looking for some conclusion that will help everyone enjoy the sport of their choice, or maybe switch over, or not switch over, but include the other sport. Yeah, I really want to come to a solution that we can solve in Exeter, because I think that both sports actually deserve a place of their own, and trying to figure that out is going to be difficult. We have places we can look, but there are matters that tie them up so that we can't put any sports in a place. But I think with a discussion with all of you, that we can come up with some ideas of our constraints and our, what's the opposite of constraint, opportunities to come up with something that we're all happy with. Again, I want to repeat what the chairman said, that this is not one sport versus the other. This is how can we find a solution that gives support to everyone? I think that's it. I can't speak with mine on, sorry. So I met with two groups, pickleball group, tennis group, was really informative, and thank you all for coming out to talk to us and to meet with us and to send your emails and suggestions. I'm not going to repeat what the other two Select Board members said, except to say that I think we can find a solution. I have questions because, one, the first time I heard about it was at a meeting a few meetings ago, and that was very concerning. But we'll get through this. We'll find a way, and hopefully, everybody will be happy with the solution. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger. Selectwoman Cowan.
I don't have anything else to add that hasn't been said, but I would reiterate being, you know, I think that we need to approach this and approach the discussion not placing any blame on folks, understanding that this is an excellent opportunity to add to our town rather than detract, and really thank all of the volunteers, all of the enthusiastic pickleball and tennis participants, and our REC Advisory Committee volunteers who have done really good work on this. So I agree. I am looking forward to the discussion. I would urge everybody to, you know, put this in perspective, right? This is a good, fun problem to have, and I look forward to coming up with a solution that works for everyone.
Thank you, Selectwoman Cowan. You know, and again, Selectwoman Belanger, as you indicated, this was brought to our attention in late March, and if we look back to the genesis of this, I believe there were minutes from an October REC Advisory Committee meeting where this was discussed. You can't hear me? How's that? Is that better?
Coming through the speaker.
No, I think the speakers only go through.
We can hear Molly really well.
I'll try to talk a little bit louder. So again, this started sometime in the fall. There was a vote taken, and it was brought to the Select Board at the end of March. And I think some of the concern was how the process went forward in raising the money, also in comparing other projects that have been done at the rec park previously. We've had outside organizations like soccer organizations and softball organizations who have donated a significant amount of money. However, they weren't to change the existing structure. It was to rehab and improve something that they were already using. So I think that there's a unique difference there. One of the things that Selectwoman Cowan said, we're not here to lay blame, but I think there was a communication breakdown somewhere between a committee and staff before it got to the board. And in addition to trying to find a solution where everybody can play tennis and pickleball, we have to figure out, how do we prevent this from... we have to figure out, how do we prevent this from happening again? So that's another part of our conversation. So before we open it up to the public, I'd like to invite Mr. Bisson, Park and Rec Director, to sort of go through how this transpired from last fall till today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if it's on. Is it on?
No.
No.
It's, it's all a new process. So what we hear is what we're going to hear.
I'll speak very loud. Yes, the pandemic, Lovey nailed it on the head. The pandemic has really brought out the racket sports. And we, it hasn't been more evident with pickleball. Kyle Littlefield started pickleball several years ago, as you all know. I went to see upper courts and a handful of people. And as the years go, went by, it grew and grew. Last year, we had, Kyle had retired and we had decided to take pickleball under our, our wings. And saw it explode even more. Well, the REC advisory board was brought a proposal in October about a possible conversion of the tennis courts. And reaching out to our colleague, my colleagues nationally, regionally, and locally, this was the growing trend that we had seen all over the country. And even locally, as I mentioned in the previous, Portsmouth, Dover, Manchester, several, several communities have already posted, converted pickleball. The REC advisory board then deliberated extensively a good hour of pros and cons of pickleball and increasing it. At that time, they voted to approve the concept of the pickleball and allow our Friends of Recreation and the Pickleball Exeter Pickleball Club to go out and fundraise. That was, we thought was the proper process. Unfortunately, that was not, and that will be solely on the REC department. But it was the passion that had come out of these pickleballers. I had been interacting with them multiple times a day in a week. And it was just that enthusiasm that they wanted to improve the park. So hindsight's 20/20, obviously. And you look at it and you still see, our numbers are not where they were for tennis. And now, obviously, there's a lot of tennis people here, and I appreciate tennis, tennis. USTA just had me into one of their regional meetings last month to talk about tennis because Exeter is known for tennis. But our youth programs haven't come back. Kyle Littlefield was an institution. And where he is now gone, it is hard to build back up that clientele. The pandemic did not help things either. When you eliminate lessons, and we've seen that in all of our programs, you can't get, it's hard to get the people back because they find alternatives. So we still look at it as, we still want to have equal opportunity for everyone in accessibility. And that was the reason why we, we, we supported this. As being able to work things through, Mr. Chair and the board, and allow that accessibility. And when I say accessibility, it's not only ADA, it's, and I know people have debated, it's, it's really the setup. When you try to set up a net, it's very difficult. Sometimes, some people can't do it. So we wanted to offer the opportunity that allowed anyone just to walk up with a paddle and play, just like tennis. Now, some of the concerns I've read in the packet that you guys have had are the first I'm, I'm hearing about them. I do know that tennis courts, we do not take up as many tennis courts now as we did when we had Kyle Littlefield's tennis. Not even close, maybe a fraction of it. But at the same time, when I hear about slippery courts, acorns on it, that's a concern to me because I've never had that report back to me. So I would like to offer an ability to rectify that and work with the board to make sure that all courts are up to playable standards. And that's something I think that the board should be looking at as well, no matter what. If it's ADA accessibility to the lower courts, which is in your packet, as well as clearing debris off there and making sure it's play-safable courts for everyone.
So what data do you have to support the number of pickleball players and, and tennis players? Because you're quite adamant that nobody's playing tennis. And that was your, that was your statement back in March. I'm just asking what data you have, number one. For instance, you know, when we have other projects done in town, we do a traffic study, somebody sits and watches cars. I mean, do you have any data, number one? And number two, I guess I'm concerned that something that changes the physical layout of one of our Parks and Rec, you know, areas where you have people have been playing tennis, you have your playground there, you know, you're not rehabbing or improving per se, you're changing the entire use of that, of those courts. Did it occur to you to send out a survey? I mean, I get surveys from the Parks and Rec all the time. So I guess, you know, before I can consider approving something, I need to know the Parks and Rec have done their due diligence. And, you know, I, I completely, frankly, I'm amazed at how quickly the money was raised. And I think that's fantastic. However, you know, I also have some empathy for the folks that went out and raised the money and perhaps made some commitments that they shouldn't have been making commitments because they weren't speaking on behalf of the town. So can you, can you answer those three questions for me?
All right. On data, people realize that the pool is a, almost 24-hour operation. Am I there taking tallies of how many people are playing tennis? No. But oftentimes in the summertime, I'm there seven, eight o'clock at night, even earlier, doing filter work, and I observe. I was just up there, for instance, last, earlier, or last week, late last week, cleaning the pool, scrubbing it, getting ready to fill. And I'm observing. That's, in my 19 years, I spend on average about 50 to 60 hours in and out of the park. So quantifying data, Nico, I don't have, I would literally need to stay up there and check mark everyone.
Can I just, I'm going to throw this out there. Am I loud enough? Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. I've been told I'm loud. So quantifying the number of tennis players versus pickleball players, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think that's the direction that may make the most sense in the conversation today because that's going to fluctuate, right? That's going to fluctuate based on, oh, it's extra windy today, so there'll be less pickleball players, but there'll be, you know, it's sunnier and it's. So I think the conversation at hand is, we are now at a place where, let's discuss, how do we resolve this? Because yes, it, you know, we can go back and say, well, on December or whatever date, there were 50 players versus the 10, I don't know, maybe there was a tennis convention. I don't know what's going on. But doing that, I don't think is necessarily going to get us to the resolution that we want to. And I'm not going to put that on you because I couldn't tell you the numbers from day to day. But what I do want to say is, I want to have the conversation about permanent restructuring. I want to have the conversation about, are there locations for the money that has been raised that can be used to create permanent pickleball courts? So that both worlds can exist. You know, I saw, and I assume that a lot of people saw that video from Portsmouth with their new pickleball place that looks fabulous, the indoor location. That's incredible. I don't know who got the money for that, but hooray for them. It's a private club, but, so we have, but we have private money, right? So we do have private money that was fundraised, that's not public funds. I don't know what the cost of an outdoor version of that is considering the newer property that we've acquired. You know, we have this new building that we've just acquired that's adjacent to Parks and Rec, that has extra parking. I mean, I'm just trying to throw out ideas of like, what are we going to do? Because we can sit and go back and forth until, you know, it's really dark out and then I get really hungry. And I'm not saying that should be like your modus operandi for like moving forward, but let's have conversations that will actually lead us to what's going to be beneficial for everyone. So if it means that we are not converting tennis courts, then what's option B? If we are converting tennis courts, then how many are we converting? Who's going to get the prime spot? Who's not? What is, what does all of this look like? Those are the conversations that I think are going to be most helpful at this point because that's where we are. And I don't know, like, I may be speaking out of turn with that, but I, I want us to be, to utilize the time that we're all here because this group may not be able to come together again. So let's have the conversations about things that we can actually do and come up with the plans of actions. Two sides, you both want things, everyone wants something. What can we do to make this actually take place? Because it's getting warm out, so.
So would you just answer my, my other two questions quickly? The survey?
There had not been a survey.
Okay.
Because we had looked at the data just regionally of what other communities were doing.
Okay.
And then the infrastructure itself, it was an opportunity. We looked at it as a way to not only rehab the area, but to keep, continue to, to improve upon it.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah. So I appreciate your perspective, Lovey, but that question was important to me if we have the information. I don't want to jump ahead, it helps me to make a decision. So that's like, I have a question. What's the process or where are you at with finding a new tennis instructor? If we have a replacement tennis instructor?
We, we have a replacement tennis instructor.
Okay, you said something earlier that.
Well, Kyle retired and we, we brought in Beam Tennis out of Greenland, B-E-A-M, Mike Blaisdell.
Okay.
And he's a fabulous instructor. And he even scaled back what he had offered last year because he, he had expected more robust numbers because previously Kyle had got robust numbers. He didn't get those. He scaled back, and coincidentally, he actually is getting certified to teach pickleball, so.
Okay, but we still have a focus on tennis lessons. Trying to get the numbers up, where they were.
And we do also do USTA. We have tennis in the parks with the USTA, which is a very successful program. We have two instructors for that too as well.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Selectwoman Gilman.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan, any questions for Mr. Bisson? Or comments?
I, I mean, I'm interested in knowing the process for engagement. You know, if there's going to be a change, we typically do a bunch of outreach. I know that that was a question that the chair asked. And then my other question is, this process started before the warrant article passed to purchase that building. What does the new availability of that space mean in terms of space or availability of looking at different options of having both pickleball and tennis?
Well, we are still in the planning phase for rehabbing the building first to get in there, to move our offices. But then we're planned on doing a public forum, what people would want to see. And if that is one of the things that would come from the public forum saying, we want four pickleball courts, permanent pickleball courts back there, that would be the way we'd go. But we would definitely hold a public forum and get everything, everyone's input. Because I've had several people reach out to me for community gardens back there on the green space to sand volleyball. So we definitely would be opening up to the public to, to get their feedback.
Okay. Mr. Dean, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, not right now.
Okay. And I, I do have additional questions, but I'd like to wait until after we hear from the public. And I'm going to use my prerogative as we open it up to the public comment. Mr. Matthews, I know that you have worked with Mr. Bisson, so if you'd like to get up first to speak, that would be fine.
I'd rather wait.
You want to wait? That's fine.
I appreciate that.
So public comment is now open. Step up to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Thank you very much. My name is David Kovar, 38 Cross Road. First point, there's actually three, at least three parties to this conversation. I do not play tennis or pickleball. I am a resident of the town, interested in how public funds or town funds are being spent, but also very interested in process and procedure. I really want this to be resolved for community harmony, but I also want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent that enables this sort of problem to happen again. So that's the first point. And the second point is, is there really a sense of urgency to solve this problem? And you've said that we may not all meet together again, and you just said that there's this new space that may open up other options. I just ask the community and the board, can we potentially slow down this conversation so everybody can, everybody, including the third parties that are not playing pickleball or tennis, can have a say? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Don Clodia, Prentice Way, Exeter. I originally was going to go over the whole story of Kyle Littlefield and 20 years with tennis and how he put in the pickleball courts and it eventually evolved, et cetera, et cetera. But I think you've covered that pretty well. I was part of the group to raise the funds in order to change the courts. But one of the main reasons that we're doing this is the pickleball club, the Exeter Pickleball Club, we've been involved with the Northeast Passage out of UNH Durham, mainly for the parapickleball, which we've been doing for the past four winters at the YMCA. One day a week, they would come in with their modified sports chairs, I guess, and we would work with them to play. And what we would like to be able to do is to bring that program outside. We've spoke with Northeast Passage, as well as Jim Tufts with Special Olympics has reached out to us. He would like to also get involved and have a program outside for pickleball. So basically, a positive vote would mean a lot to the adults and the children to be able to participate in these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michelle Clough, 68, Park Street, Number 1. I am a parapickleball player and is my daughter. We have enjoyed adaptive pickleball. It's been something that we can do together. There are not a lot of local opportunities for myself and my daughter. I was excited when they said, and why I said, we're going to have parapickleball. I took my daughter out of school to come play so she could learn how to use a wheelchair with some peers, so she could play an activity. We go to Manchester to ski, we play baseball in Portsmouth. In the summer, we go all the way to Portland to play pickleball. We play court sports in Durham. And their tennis program that's accessible to us is in Newry, Maine. There are no accessible tennis programs here. My daughters wanted to learn how to play tennis for years, and we can't find a place. We were so excited when Northeast Passage came. It's so fun, it's inclusive, my daughter's self-esteem has gone up. It's something that we can do together. I've rented her a sports chair the past couple summers, except there's no place for us to play pickleball. I can't set up the nets, she can't set up the nets, but we go with our paddles anyways. But it's not the same. We're not playing, it's just her and I with the ball. If we are nice enough to be able to catch in on a game, they'll let us in, they'll let us play. But again, my daughter's in school. Pickleball is an inclusive sport if we have the nets, if it's there. You know, it's, this year, I was really excited when the Northeast Passage came out with, we're having parapickleball again. And along with that, I came a letter from my daughter. Special Olympics is going to look into offering pickleball too. But then again, I had to choose to take my daughter out of school so she could play the activity that's accessible, or do I leave her in school? Thankfully, I didn't have to choose because it never happened. But that was sad to me because everybody knows the benefits, especially with the pandemic of, of physical activity and the social emotional aspects of it. My daughter was in remote school for a year. We know what community and, and physical fitness and activity does. You know, one in four people will have a disability at some point. Having the permanent courts is going to give, you know, Exeter the inclusive and the equitable wellness opportunities for this fast-growing, well-established sport. We're not taking away from our. We're not taking away from our community. We're really just adding to it.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Ricchio, 25 Little Pine Lane, Exeter. First, I want to thank you for your service, your volunteerism, for all of you for taking the time to meet with us and hear us out. I'm here this evening to voice my concerns over this proposal. I put all my thoughts into a letter that's involved in your, that's in your packet, but I just want to emphasize a few points. This is not pickleball versus tennis. I'm pro both sports. I play both sports. They're both fun, and I get there is an addictiveness to pickleball. And if the pickleball community wants to raise funds, to build dedicated pickle parks, I fully support that. I would help with the fundraising, but not at the expense of taking away from others. This is about what is doing best for the majority of our community. I was curious what the mission statement of the Department of Park and Rec is, so I saw it on the website. And it reads, "The Exeter Park and Rec Department is committed to providing affordable, inclusive, accessible opportunities to a diverse range of abilities and interests across generations to build confidence, quality of life, and pride in the community. It is my opinion that the proposal in front of you this evening isn't direct conflict with the mission statement of the rec. This proposal at its core does not hold the spirit of inclusivity, quite the opposite. This proposal is to benefit a small group of pickleball enthusiasts whose goal is not to benefit the community, but to host tournaments for out-of-towners and turn Exeter into a pickleball destination, with total disregard for the impact on the majority of Exeter residents. Not to mention that the lower courts are not ADA compliant, and there would be no tennis courts available for residents in wheelchairs. Hundreds of visitors expected will exhaust the precious parking facilities already limited and subject to contention. This reduction of parking will impact others in the town by limiting parking for families for uses..." I'm sorry, I get a little vertigo-y.
Sit down, please.
Yeah, would you mind? I'm sorry.
No problem. I'll have to take the mic with you.
That's okay.
Oh. I don't think it's working, but, okay, I'm sorry. Last between them. "This reduction in parking will impact others in the town by limiting parking for families for uses of the facilities such as the pool and playground. Furthermore, the economic impact argument is completely speculative. There is zero evidence to claim that tournament attendees will eat, sleep, or shop in Exeter, especially since no restaurants or shops are located near the rec. If I had not been approached by Mr. Cludier while playing on the morning of April 13th, I would have no idea that this proposal even existed, much less was this far along in the process. The plan was presented to us as if it were a done deal, with construction to start within the month of April. I consider myself to be an active member in the Exeter community. I serve on the board of the EJBSL. I volunteered in our schools for twelve, for nine years, and I've been in attendance of every school board meeting for the past two years. I also play tennis at the rec two to five days per week. I follow several Exeter groups, including the rec on social media. Nowhere, with the exception of buried in the minutes of one rec advisory board meeting in November, was there any mention of this plan. It is also my understanding that the advisory board voted to allow the group to fundraise, not to approve the proposal, which is an important distinction. The group did not want to wait the two years to put this into a warrant article so it could be voted on. I must ask why the hurry? It is my opinion that if I had not spoken with Mr. Cludier on April 13th and tennis, and fellow players, that many residents of Exeter would never have known that this was even being planned. I hope you vote no on this proposal. Thank you."
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, Karen Doudra, 12 Pine Meadows Drive, Exeter. I've written a letter, so I'm not going to restate that. I have very, two limited comments to make, and they're about equal access. Because I want to tell you that what it's like to have to set up the nets. Our nets are stored in a large metal box. It's 34 inches tall. It's deep. To get the nets out, one must bend over from the waist, and then there's the weight of the net to lift up. The bag weighs 21 pounds. Once you get it out, you must carry it anywhere from 30 feet to 120 feet to reach the far end of the courts. At that point, you have to drop this bag, and there are 13 metal components that have to go together. To get those in, now, remember, this, our demographic is a group in their 60s, 70s, 80s, up to 92 primarily. And it's getting harder to do those things. And I would urge you to please keep in mind that we pickleball players are not spring chickens anymore. And to have to get down on my knees on the court to do that, it, I'm sorry, it frankly is a hardship. The other way that we don't have equal access is that one must have the combination to the lockbox. We have kind of organically grown and fundraised as we've gone along, rather than coming to you, the town, and asking for materials and supplies. We've done it ourselves, and so we have to lock up our supplies. So, for somebody to play, they can't just walk on. They've got to know the combination, and they have to be physically able to set up the net. And I'm talking as a supposedly abled person. At our ages, we have limitations. We have shoulder injuries, knee injuries. And so, I would urge you to keep that in mind. And finally, I would say, we have, there are, in this town, six tennis courts at the high school, eight at the rec, or 14, 16 at PEA. There are no less, there are... There are 30 tennis courts in the town of Exeter. There are zero, there is zero pickle, permanent pickleball court. If you are a parent and you're trying to level the playing field and come up with a compromise, I think the compromise here is to share.
Thank you, Karen. Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Barbara Desjardins, and I reside at 50 Brookside Drive. I am an active tennis player, and I'm an active pickleball player. And for me, I just want to explain to everyone that it's very important to have a permanent pickleball court. Because, first of all, Karen mentioned about the nets. The nets are extremely, extremely difficult to set up. And that does take a lot of time to do it. And if you don't know the combination, you just can't go over on a Saturday or Sunday. The only time you play is when it's scheduled open play, and then you know that you can probably play. So, that's a big thing. The other thing about pickleball, pickleball, I think, is a sport that is very important for Exeter residents. First of all, because any age can play it. It's played with not expensive material, with the paddle, basically, and then the wiffle ball. And the court is half the size of a tennis court. So people like myself, who, I mean, I'm still a tennis player, but I don't cover tennis court like I used to. So to play on half the size of a tennis court, I can do pretty good playing pickleball. I can still move and bend and all, but my running is limited. So a lot of the players, of course, from tennis, will move to pickleball, because they have, you know, maybe some arthritis or whatever. That's important. And for kids, that's even more important, because they don't have to run as far. They're, you know, they're, they're small. They can still play and have a really good time. And the other thing that's so important is there is a pickleball etiquette that's not only here, but it's everywhere there is pickleball. Pickleball etiquette that means that, when it is posted, "Open pickleball," anyone comes, anyone comes, and what happens is, you are rotated in. You don't have to get a partner like in tennis, and, or even cancel, because one of your partners canceled in tennis, but you can just go anytime. Pop in, and you're rotated in. And as soon as there are a few people, everybody, the length of the games stop. They, they start to decrease, like, "We're only going to play the nine, because we have five or six people waiting." Or it's going to be now four, four off and four in. So it's, it's really, it's a wonderful experience. And for me, it's kind of exciting, because I have many times tried to schedule tennis with three other partners and planned on it, and, you know, two, two canceled, and then you finished. You can't get to play. So to show up three times a week on a, on a court, and then have nets that are dedicated to pickleball with, with lines, I mean, actually, you can see whether the ball is in or out. Now at the rec, I mean, we make pickleball, but each time you play, you have to look and say, "Okay, the white line over here means, okay, I can't go beyond this, but if I play on the other side, there's the blue line." So which is in and which is out? And that's always, you know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of confusion for, I'll say for a senior, or I'll say for me. That's one thing. And the, the other thing is that if any one of you ever drive by during the, from the time the snow stops, the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the Exeter rec, you're going to see probably all of four courts, and you're going to see mainly probably seniors playing as early as 7 o'clock in the morning, they're out there. 7 o'clock, right up until 10 o'clock, that's, that's the pickleball time. People are out there, having a wonderful time, and they don't stop. They pay through the fall, and they don't put their paddles away until, like, the snow falls. They're dressed for the weather. And it's really nice. It's great for the seniors. I mean, seniors in Exeter, what do we have? We have, we have tennis, and then we have pickleball. We don't have anything else, really. I mean, there, there are programs that you can sign up and go to, but for exercise, to me, that is so, so important. And I also believe for, for the senior, one thing that's important is that it helps your concentration, it helps your focus, it helps your memory, and you get to, you have great social interaction with your partner, and you just, it's just a great sport. And you have this enthusiasm when you play each game that you really don't have in tennis. So, I, I am totally in favor of having permanent pickleball courts, and I really hope that you consider making some courts, permanent pickleball courts for Exeter. Everybody, I think the town residents would really love it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I agree with everything that she said, except for the part that tennis, for seniors in, in Exeter, of which I'm one. My name is Richard Gabrielli, and I live at 2 Sterling Hill Drive. I play every day, weather permitting, at the courts down at the rec center, with guys that are in their 70s and 80s. Every day, weather permitting. We have just as much fun, and we have the camaraderie, we have everything else, as this previous speaker said. I, I respect the pickleball players. I've got nothing but good things to say to them. Just the, the ability to keep these tax-funded courts that were originally dedicated to tennis is something I think should be maintained. And pickleball should remain a separate, constructed, you know, specific for that sport, in, in property that's adjacent, maybe behind the new facility that you folks have purchased recently. You know, I, I'm okay with sharing the courts. I don't want to see them permanently converted, and I'm, all of my tennis friends that live and play in Exeter feel the same way. I just came out to, you know, to support the tennis, and like I said, pickleball, fine, you, you have the courts for a number of hours every day dedicated to you on the upper courts, and that's fine. We, we go down to the bottom courts and stuff, but I think we need to share and slow down the process. This is going way too fast, and I think you need your own dedicated courts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Hi, my name is Mary Harbin. I'm a citizen of New Hampshire. I am not a resident of Exeter. May I speak or not? As an ob, to observe?
Well, it's up to the board.
I would feel more comfortable until we heard from every Exeter resident who wants to speak first.
Certainly, no problem.
I agree.
Then we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Hi.
Board. My name is Philip McDonald, 96 Main Street, Exeter. These guys aren't going to like what I have to say, but I kind of like tennis better than pickleball. The problem is, I can't play tennis anymore, because I had a knee replacement and a hip replacement, and the doctor said, you know, I should restrict that kind of movement. Fortunately, these guys took me under their wing and let me, let me join their, their group to play pickleball. And, you know, I happened to key in on what Barbara said, you know, we go down there some days, it's, it's a great turnout, this, this on, where you normally have four tennis courts. I understand we could have, is it eight? 10? 10 pickleball courts?
Eight.
Eight, eight pickleball courts. There's usually four, it's always doubles, and there's usually a group of people waiting. So, this, where you can have four tennis courts, most can accommodate 16. I never see anybody waiting. We could have accommodated up to 32 people, plus the people that are waiting. It just, it just seems like, you know, it's, there's more of a need for pickleball, and it accommodates more of the citizens of Exeter. So, I'm, a little, I'm sure you guys are frustrated with the process that went through, but I think, in the end, the process worked, because it was brought to your attention, you guys corrected it, we're having these meetings. I think we could, we, you know, I don't think it's a productive to spend a lot of time with the process. Let's, the process is here, let's just move on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Christine Reed. I'm from 6 Sleepy Hollow Road in Exeter. I don't want to get into tennis versus pickleball. I think you stated, right as, as the meeting started, that we're not going to get into that. I'm not going to get into people's needs because of doctors' orders or whatever. And I disagree with the last gentleman. It is the process we're here about. The fact that all of this is taking place without even the board knowing about it, and how are you expected to vote on something that you don't have any information on? We can give you anecdotal evidence. They can give you anecdotal evidence. What we need is facts to vote. And I don't think we have that right now. I am totally for the ability for everyone in Exeter to be able to play a sport, especially through the rec. I was a Kyle Littlefield student for years. I sorely miss him. I know why he, he created the pickleball group, because, great, get more people out there, get more people involved, engaged in sport. I am totally for having their own courts, not take away our courts to do that. That was what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Good evening. My name is Pavel Pazorek. I'm the citizen of the Exeter town, 5 Brookside Drive. I sent you the letter. I think you have it, but I will read it anyway, please. So, good evening to everybody. My name is Pavel Pazorek. I would like to share with you my personal view on the importance of the recreation department area in our community. I'm avid tennis and soccer player. I also play pickleball, and I like it, believe it or not. I have been part of the Exeter community through coaching, youth soccer, or teaching tennis, just about anybody, whoever wished to learn it. I'm on a tennis course pretty much every day with my friend Rick, so I know exactly how many people are there or not. But that's besides the point. I do spend a significant amount of time there. My wife, my sons are both playing tennis. We enjoy the park activities. I'm very grateful that we have such a special place in our town. To me, this is a place of great social interaction, when people can relax, be physically active, or just socialize with friends and family. The reason why this place has such a popularity is because it is offering inclusion and sharing in equal measures, which define its beneficial qualities. I believe every area of this place was designated to be accessible to any individual. By trying to permanently alter the park, something will change. It's going to be different, isn't it? isn't it? So that's going to be a really tough decision for all of us to make. But I believe that before we will try to alter or change permanently, I think we should really look at every options and try to slow down the process. I was really surprised how fast it happened. I didn't like it. I didn't know about it. Only by accident I learned about it. So I pretty much wish to both groups, and I know many people from this group, as from this group, I wish to everybody mutual respect and common sense that will prevail in this decision-making. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Kevin Keveney, 14 Exeter Farms Road. Thanks for taking the time to listen to both sides. And I've got a 20 pages here I'm going to read. So bear with me. I am, you have my minute, I mean, my email, all the points that I made. I enjoy pickleball. I enjoy tennis. I've asked, you know, to learn more from both sides, talking to them. I'm not opposed to pickleball courts. I'm just opposed to repurposing the public courts into pickleball courts. So if we can explore all the, you know, alternatives, look into every option available before we get to the point of, okay, we're going to have to do something with the tennis courts. And what are we going to do now? How would they be divided up? Who gets what? This and that. It's, you know, I don't want a winner and loser in this. Let's just first get that part of it looked into in depth, go from there so that we both have a win-win here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Jay Childs, 700 Place, Exeter. I just got here and so I've been feverishly cutting my notes back, even though I'm not exactly sure what was covered so far. I agree with Mr. Keveney that I don't think there needs to be winners and losers here. But I do believe that we don't want to establish a precedent with the process that has taken place here. So to me, in addition to the idea being a bad one to convert shared tennis and pickleball courts into pickleball only courts, the process followed by the Exeter Pickleball Club and the Parks and Recreation Department since November, I think has been deeply flawed. Nancy Ricchio spoke earlier. Why was she and many more in the community knew nothing about this plan until one player notified her that these courts were going to be turned into pickleball as basically a done deal? So I'm disappointed that there was no public outreach to solicit feedback and input from the broader public and give them the opportunity to ask questions and voice concerns. I think you'll find a broad community that wants to accommodate access to play to a growing sport without taking away the ability for another growing sport to play as it has been. Parks and Rec often reaches out to hear from residents regarding changes and additions to our public spaces. For example, social media posts and surveys have been asked for reimagining and renovating Planet Playground. There was significant outreach to the public around the potential acquisition of the essential building and surveys to approve Rec Mini Camp for Kids. But there really wasn't anything on any Parks and Rec sites or social media posted to really make the general public aware of a proposal being discussed with the club that would significantly change a public recreation facility. This is not about, to me, minimal transparency. Well, that meeting was posted somewhere and telling the public in a way that they need to be combing through multiple Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings and minutes if they want to stumble upon the plan. This, to me, is about proactive outreach earlier in the process to bring in feedback. Another thing that bothers me with the way that things went forward, and again, I want this to be a win-win for everyone, is that as part of this advisory board apparently voted in favor of raising funds and converting the top courts to pickleball only, that advisory vote alone is not an official approval to begin conversion of public courts, regardless of the raising of funds by the club. That decision-making power rests with you, the select board. But it's my understanding that some or many of the board didn't even know about this plan until a March 2022 meeting, by which point money had been raised, naming rights, plaques, inscribed bricks, marketed, tournaments promoted, and a contract signed to begin construction once the upper courts were closed. To me, this is the definition of cart before the horse. There's also a bother, some sort of pay-to-play optics to this proposal. If a private group can raise enough money, does that grant them the power to make other changes to public spaces without following a truly public process? I don't think we would be setting a good precedent by functioning this way. So in conclusion, the plan presented tonight by the Pickleball Club should be denied. I think this sort of what I consider to be kind of a bull in a china shop, under-the-radar approach to making significant changes should be sent back to the drawing board and this time with a little more consideration on how their plan impacts others in the community. Maybe begin with a process to consider how to add dedicated pickleball courts without taking away courts from another growing sport. And maybe require Exeter Park and Rec to actively solicit feedback and ideas from the broader public who of course pay for and enjoy using these facilities. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Glenn Potvin, 20 Chestnut Street. I was fortunate to spend a little time in Florida this year. And I had ACL surgery. I tried to be as athletic as I can, but tennis is just too rough. Orthopedic surgeon doesn't want me running and stopping. So I learned about pickleball and I was amazed. I mean, you see, especially in Florida, I'm not a young guy, but a lot of older folks, some folks, you know, fit, some folks overweight. I can tell you, man or woman, it could be 60s, 70s, I've been beat by them all. You can't tell by looking at folks how good they're going to be. It's a combination. How many people on the board have played pickleball? So you can't tell by looking at somebody. It's a skill that, it's athleticism, but it's also almost like a combination of ping pong and tennis, smaller space. And it just brings people together. I couldn't believe how packed courts in Florida were. And now I've, you know, I've played here as well. And it just, there's a, you know, the eight courts, each tennis court divided in two. So eight courts, you know, active, limited amount of time, Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, as you know, and a sign up. And there's, courts are full and there's a sign up. The tennis courts, people are playing, that's fine. And, you know, love tennis, nothing against tennis players. In your position, very grateful for what you do, the easiest decision to make by anybody is to not decide or find a reason not to decide. And it sounds like that's the direction that some people want to go. I'm sorry, you just can't fight the tide. I've grown up, my children started baseball, you know, in the high school, lacrosse was just more popular at that high school. So they learn lacrosse and, you know, it just, both sports are popular. It's fine. I want to put baseball and lacrosse on the same level as tennis. But pickleball, for, especially for an older crowd and some younger players, is just immensely popular. It's community focused. People get together, very active, athleticism, people come out. Not saying it's not true about tennis, but if you do go through the long-winded process, easier for you folks, let's take a couple of years, let's put it to a vote. I bet, you know, the numbers are probably going to be five to one in favor of pickleball. It's just, it's a growing sport. So it's not either tennis or pickleball. I don't think that's what these people are asking. It's tennis and pickleball. And it's proportioning the existing space proportionate to the number of users. And I agree, you know, with what you said, Chair, about what are the numbers? And unfortunately, you know, he's not prepared to have the numbers. But what this guy does is also a very difficult job. He's trying to satisfy everybody and you can't. He's got an overwhelming number of people coming up, getting involved in pickleball and saying, we'd like dedicated space. It's very difficult, as, you know, the woman had said, you have this construction lockbox. I can't go and I can't open it. I've got to wait for somebody to show up. We've got to tear it down, put it away. It's just not, you know, equitable. So I think that's the key. Just make a decision, you know? Don't find a reason to put it off because somebody is going to be upset. People are always going to be upset. Try to get a sense of the numbers if you can, based on the number of signups, based on if you sit, if you have somebody in a neutral party, go and sit. As I've seen, I've seen the lower courts when I've played pickleball, maybe half full. And I've seen the pickleball courts with people waiting. So try to satisfy, you know, as many people in this town as you can. You're not going to satisfy everybody. But I really urge you, just try to make a fair decision to please the maximum number of people that you can in the town. So thank you.
Greg, is there anybody else out in the hallway that wishes to speak?
Hi, Andrew Shakely, 20 Epping Road. I think a lot of discussions has been said already, but I think the salient points to me are that I think both sides would like to support both sports. However, with the process I went through to change the, to propose changing tennis to pickleball, I don't think it's really understood how many tennis players there. I'm a very periodic tennis player and I've had to wait on the courts, not for pickleball players, but because all the courts are taken. So I don't think we really do have good data on what the usage is. And I think ultimately, the best solution is, okay, how can we create more permanent pickleball facilities without taking away tennis facilities? And that's just what I think is probably the best solution and hopefully would make everyone feel better. Because we have to acknowledge pickleball is growing. It's great for an older demographic. So I think the town ought to take steps to accommodate that. But right now, the way the process went through, I don't think we're at the point that this is the right decision.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Arlene Childs, 700 Place, Exeter. I just wanted to speak on, I kind of feel it's not broken. Why do we have to fix it right now urgently so with what's been coming along? I mean, I am a tennis player. I didn't start playing tennis till I was 48. So I've been playing for about seven years. I thought about playing potentially to pickleball when Kyle introduced it. I just didn't have the opportunity and I stuck with tennis. I had thumb arthritis surgery. So I've had ailments enough. I still play tennis. My concern is, I love the upper courts and I love to play tennis on the upper courts. I have, you know, if I want to speak to, you know, medical issues, et cetera, I have a neuroatypical issue. I have ADHD. Playing against the pickleball players, pop, 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 it's very distracting for me. But I'm not opposed to pickleball itself. I would love to see a pickleball court elsewhere. But until then, I'm willing to share the courts. I've been sharing the courts. I find the lower level, the noise of the highway is more. It's hard to hear people calling out scores. It's treacherous when the acorns start falling. It's much more buggier. And the steps to get to the tennis courts, they're not very conducive for anyone who may want to play tennis in a wheelchair because you can't get down there in a wheelchair. And I do know Kyle and Leo at the time were involved in trying to get some tennis wheelchair program started. Jay was actually on the board. And unfortunately, things happened. Pandemic hit, Kyle retired and that kind of went by the wayside. But it would be great to see tennis come back for wheelchair-bound players as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Dick Matthews, 13 Runowitz, and currently on the advisory board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, volunteered for that back in September. Also recently, elected president of the Exeter Pickleball Club, which was formed in March. There's a couple of things that are problematic that we can't change. We never would have moved forward with raising any money if we didn't believe we had permission to build the courts. You don't do that. People don't donate money to something that might happen. It's not how that works. So we went through the process that we thought was accurate. And once it was approved by the advisory board, which I now know is just an advisory board, once it was approved, we assumed that we had permission to raise the funds to make the courts happen. After that approval, the contract was signed, money was loaned to be sure that we could get first in line in the spring. This isn't all of a sudden. Pickleball has been played here for over five years. It's not some new thing that somebody backdoored. This isn't a bunch of people with deep pockets that are trying to sneak around the system and do something else. We followed what we believed was the right course. The folks that donated the money, as little as $20 and one major donation, which is River Woods, were told the courts were going to be built and therefore would you donate. At this point, it's a $38,000 gift to the town to repurpose three tennis courts. So you've heard all of the different information. The most important part about this is that there is a growing number of people who are playing it, but there's also an aging population. This is all automatic. You can research this anywhere you want. Pickleball is easier to learn, much more fun for someone who's never played a sport, and completely interactive. The average game takes 11 minutes, maybe 12. Well, what goes on the rest of the time? You're talking. You're having fun because you are waiting. There is never a time when the pickleball courts are open that there is not a line to play. Never. There's as many as 20 people waiting to play, but we rotate people in and out. We. It's not about us versus tennis. It's about taking a facility and making it truly accessible without spending a quarter of a million or a half a million dollars, which is what will happen if we take this under advisement and then start looking for a place to put permanent courts. It'll be no less than a quarter of a million dollars. And I've been told it'll be more like a half a million dollars by people who build these things. So where we are right now, I like the gentleman who said, just make a decision. It's okay. I don't hate tennis people. I'm sorry you feel like you were blindsided. That was never the intention. And that still wouldn't be the intention. We're not taking away your lifestyle. There's still five tennis courts plus every other tennis court that we're not supposed to mention. There are zero pickleball courts. Zero. So the reason that so many people were willing to donate $20, which is all they had, or invest money in a certain demographic, which is what River Woods agreed to do, they're investing in a demographic, they get to have a sign about this big, put on the fence, it says River Woods, as one of the leadership group. And that's it. They're not renaming the park. They're not doing anything other than supporting a demographic that has very few opportunities to be active in this town. It's nice to get on a bus and go to a casino or take a trip to go somewhere else. But it's nicer to go stand out in the sun or the wind. We do play in the wind, by the way, lovey. I'll show you how personally, I promise. And enjoy camaraderie without having to have a group pulled together. You show up, you're accepted. My wife and I just were down, out on the left coast, California. We played in three different places. We didn't know anybody. We showed up, we were welcomed with open arms. know anybody. We showed up, we were welcomed, with open arms. And that's what the pickleball community does. So sadly, we have to make a decision, because there are people that expect a phone call tomorrow from me that tells them either this is going to happen or it's not, and we then write the checks back to them. Because this money's already been donated to the Friends of Park, Exeter Parks and Recreation. So, whatever you decide, I respect. I'm sorry that the process was flawed. I can point fingers and say, "Human beings screwed up." Yeah, they did. It doesn't matter. The bottom line is, nobody's life is going to change if those pickleball courts are installed permanently. Nobody. Your life isn't going to be over. You still can play tennis. Whose life is going to be changed are the people that haven't even stepped on that court yet. Because it's accessible to more people and serves more members of our community than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last opportunity for public comment before we bring it back to the board, and I would ask the board, go ahead.
Hello, Michael Ruckio, over at 25 Foot of Punglin in Exeter. I've heard a lot of comments on why pickleball is fun, why it's great for older people, why it's great for those with lesser physical abilities. At the start of this, we were told, "Let's make this about process," and things like that. And the only argument I heard toward that was that they weren't aware of the correct process. I would just say that not knowing what a process is, is not an excuse for bypassing what that process is. Let's follow the process. Let's start from square one, and let's find a solution that everyone can agree upon and makes everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from residents of Exeter? Seeing none, I'd ask the board to consider the person that would like to speak outside. Any objection?
Thank you very much.
If you just say your name and address would be great.
Mary Harb, 48 Mountain View Terrace.
In what town?
Oh, sorry, Rye, New Hampshire. I just want to tell you a very brief story about Portsmouth, New Hampshire Public Courts. They had lots and lots of pickleball players on those courts, and they have lots and lots of tennis players on those courts. And they used to have pickleball players who would play using the tennis nets sometimes that were already there. They had the lines drawn on the courts, or sometimes they brought their own nets and set them up. Last year, I believe at the beginning of last spring, I'm not sure, I could be off a little bit, they installed permanent pickleball courts on those public courts in Portsmouth. This is what I have observed, and that is, before there were permanent courts, everybody rotated. Tennis players, pickleball players rotated. Everybody had an hour, and they were very good about waiting their turn. There was sometimes a line, but it was both. When the pickleball, pickleball permanent courts were set in place, the lines of people waiting to play tennis got longer in the late afternoon and evening. The pickleball courts were very often, again, my observations, were very often empty at that time of day. They were full in the morning, full, full, and they still are. But in the later time of the day, those courts are often empty, from what I've seen, as I wait now much longer to get a tennis court available. So I suggest to Exeter, if you all are thinking about availability and access, you think hard about what a permanent court does, and perhaps there's some solution in setting up, I don't know, some kind of a situation where those, those not, those, what would you call them, those fold-up tennis nets?
Portable.
Portable, thank you. Those portable nets. If there's any solution using those, it then does keep your courts open and available all the time to everyone. So, I recognize that, I certainly recognize that the portable tennis, I'm sorry, pickleball nets are, it sounds like they're difficult to set up. But there may be a solution there. So I wish you the best of luck, and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Last call for public comment before we bring it back to the board. Okay, seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the board, and I've seen all of us taking feverish notes. So, the board is going to deliberate this evening. We're going to have a conversation, we're going to have a discussion. This board does not typically punt things forward or delay things. However, we do deliberate, and if we need additional time to do research or due diligence, we take it. But we ultimately end up voting. This is a board that takes action. I appreciate certain deadlines that may be out there. I think if we were to vote or not vote, or vote for the sake of voting because everybody's here, we would be doing a disservice to the tennis players, to the pickleball players, and certainly the taxpayers. I'm sincerely appreciative for every single one of you that got up and spoke this evening, and every single one of your arguments were compelling, particularly you, ma'am, because when I first ran for select board, one of my positions was advocating for seniors and making additional programming. It's very important to me. I would like to see permanent pickleball courts in Exeter, but I'm not going to ask this board to make a decision it may not be ready to make tonight, because there's a deadline tomorrow. In terms of the naming rights, and again, Mr. Bisson, I'd refer to you, because I don't know what conversations you had with your board and with the folks from Friends of Rec, but in 2015, and this is online on the town website, in 2015, the select board at that time adopted a sponsorship policy. And with that sponsorship policy, for certain limits of money raised, if there's any signage or any recognition, depending upon the amount, it has to come before the select board. So, I'm sorry if you were put in a situation where you promised some folks some things that may or may not be able to be delivered.
I understand.
So, you know, I agree with Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf that, you know, we need to move forward, but we also need to look at what's done, and we need to look at, we have a process, and we need to follow that process. Because if we don't follow the process this time, it sets something up for the next time. And the first gentleman who has since left that got up talked about the policies, but the taxpayers. Now, I know the upper courts are desirable for tennis, they're desirable for pickleball. They should be. Because just a few years ago, the taxpayers paid to improve the tennis courts. And I would like to get some public feedback about how the taxpayers and the voters feel about totally restructuring something that they just paid significant money to improve. So, those are just some of my initial thoughts. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, we'll start with you, please.
So, I have a couple of things that I think I agree with you completely, that I don't think it would be fair for us to make a definitive decision tonight, based on all the feedback that's come our way. And I think it's only fair that we share our thoughts and responses to what's been shared with us, and it's unfortunate that you have to make a call tomorrow. But, you know, if this is something that they're passionate about, and we start the process over, and there's a way to figure out how to do it, then, then great. A couple of things that I think in the interim would be great to have a conversation about is, how do we figure out the storage system? You know, like, there are things that I think that we can talk about, and perhaps, Greg, you can assist with, where it's, do we have a different storage container that has, you know, easy access for people that's raised up? Those are the kinds of short-term things I think that we can do so that you're still able to access the courts and not feel as if it's a lot of work. Some of the other points, and I know that everyone was saying, "Well, we need numbers, we need numbers." Let's be honest with ourselves. Whatever numbers one group gets versus the other group, y'all not going to be happy. So, that's the truth of the matter. Then we have to figure out, well, how many from the Exeter, from the tennis group or Exeter residents versus how many from the pickleball group or Exeter residents or visitors? So, yes, it would be great to have numbers, but I'm going to go with my gut on this, that even if the numbers weighed heavily on one side versus the other, neither group is going to be pretty stoked about that being the decision maker. So, if you want to sit out there, Greg, for a week and watch the cameras, I'm not going to stop you. I just don't think it's going to be helpful for the decision that we're making, because we have two popular sports that are great for all ages. My kids play pickleball as well. They quit on tennis, that's a different story. But, you know, it's a sport, both sports are great for all ages, abilities of people. So, we're not going to, I don't think, argue about that. I think the bottom line is figuring out where. Like, where is it going to happen? I think we're all in agreement that we want to have both sports exist in this town. Now, we just need to take a step back and figure out how. So, I think, you know, everyone is right. The process was slightly flawed. We'll go back to the drawing board and do this right the second time around. That's, I mean, that's the best, I think, that we can do with all of the information that we now have, and move forward from there, and, you know. That's basically my thought on it.
Great. Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Selectwoman Olaf Roundtree, sorry, covered a lot of what I had already written down, again. But I still have questions that affect the taxpayers in that if we're talking about developing either new tennis courts somewhere or pickleball courts, it will be a cost to the town, and I want to know, I want to have a better idea of what that is, that we go under, take the responsibility of finding that out, and how, you know, depending on where we can find a place, what we can do, how much will it cost to one or the other. I understand the difficulty of playing a game with lines striped for one sport and then re-stripped for another sport, and how hard that is. I'm sorry, I haven't played pickleball. I played tennis in the 70s, so, you know, things have changed. But, so I understand that difficulty, and that drives me towards saying, yes, we need to dedicate a place for people that play a different game. We have basketball courts that aren't painted to change over to some other court. But I think that, you know, that is part of the process, is to find out the information of, do we have a place to put something? What money does it take? Do we have that? Can we, you know, we, if the Friends of Parks and Rec comes up with the funds again, we're certainly willing to take those to get a job done. But you need to know, in order to do that, what we're looking for. So, I feel strongly that we need to, I can't make a decision tonight that we go forward with this until I know a little bit more about how the two things interwork together. I don't know the setup of pickleball as a temporary, you know, game-playing thing, and it doesn't do any damage to the tennis courts, which I have not heard any information about that, so I'm assuming it doesn't. And, but I have to agree that we need to take some time to see if we can provide these two opportunities to everyone, and that means the taxpayers also, who have already paid for an upgrade to the tennis court, and now we want to change, you know, we're being asked to change what the intent of that project was. So, we do need more time.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. Selectwoman Valanter.
So, of course, my notes, we've covered mostly, and I appreciate the difficulty of setting up and taking down, but hopefully there's a solution that Greg can come up with to help get that taken care of temporarily. We have to do a process, and I know it frustrates people apparently, but that's, we have to do our due diligence here. The survey is important, data, as much as we can possibly get, is important, because for the town people to take the survey and make informed decisions, we kind of need to know, if at all possible, what our needs are. So that if, for instance, we can find a piece of land and dedicate a pickleball, what are our needs? I mean, do we want, you know, do we want whatever, right? So the data is kind of important if it's available. So, Greg, you haven't, I shouldn't ask in that question, we're deliberating, but cost, do we even have a piece of property? It's clear we need pickleball, but I just, I'm not convinced yet that we need to take away from the tennis courts to do that. We need to look at our options and then make informed decisions. And a survey is really important to do that, because it's really not just the town people who are here that play pickleball and tennis, but we all need to weigh in on this. That's part of our community, and we have to celebrate that and do that. So, that's where I am at right now. And it's important to follow our 2015 sponsors and stuff. So, we need to make sure that Parks and Rec, our committee has this information before they make decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Cowan, we have not forgot about you.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of questions, too, that make it hard for me to make a decision because I don't know that we're going to get the answers tonight. Some of the things that I'm thinking about when we are expanding pickleball in this place are, you know, what does the cost to the town look like? I know that in the presentation from the pickleball players, they're saying nothing, but there's going to be water usage in bathrooms, supplies in the restroom, limited parking during the summer for pool users. What does that look like? Are, is there going to be, are there going to be pickleball tournaments scheduled during summer camp? You know, all of these things that I just, I don't know that we have the answers to. And then the other thing, I am very sympathetic to putting, setting up and taking down something that is heavy and maybe cumbersome. And I don't know if it would be possible to put this as a Parks and Rec duty, but that seems to me, especially when Parks and Rec staff are in that building, which is next door, for them to do that. Or, you know, as we're waiting for this, why, why are we converting the top courts, which we've just spent money redoing, versus using redoing the bottom courts? So, is it possible to have the bottom courts be dedicated pickleball space for now? So, at least there is some dedicated pickleball space while we're working this out.
Great. Thank you, Selectwoman Cowan. Mr. Bisson, can I, I have a couple of questions, so if you could come to the podium, please. Somebody mentioned the number of tennis courts that we have, or that are in the town, versus the number of pickleball courts. I believe the number was 30 when you accumulated.
We can include PEA.
Okay. So, PEA residents cannot use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. SAU 16, maybe when they're not using them, or what, what do we have with SAU 16?
When school is not in session, they're open to the public.
When it is not in session?
Correct.
Okay. So...
Does that include summer school? Sorry.
No, that does not include summer school.
Okay. So, as a town, in the Parks and Rec, we have eight tennis courts.
That's correct.
And zero pickleball courts.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's 16, they're lined courts, there's 16 lined courts on...
But the only tennis courts that are town-owned are at 4 Hampton Road.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And how many tennis courts are there?
Eight.
Eight?
Yep.
That's what I just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have eight tennis courts, zero pickleball courts.
It says eight at the rec department, is that correct?
That's 4 Hampton Road.
And there's how many at the high school?
We're talking town-owned.
Just town, not school or PEA.
Yep.
Just town-owned. There's eight.
The school owns town?
The school is different. We have to get permission from the school. SAU 16. So, in other words, yes, as a taxpayer, it's part of the town, but as a town resident, you have you have to get permission to use school property. You just can't go there whenever you want.
I thought he said when the school was not.
Is not in session, but to represent that they're always available is not completely accurate, is my point. So the town has eight courts at 4 Hampton Road, correct?
Yeah.
Several of us have mentioned the fact that the town recently improved the three upper courts using money from the taxpayers, correct?
We resurfaced all the courts, Mr. Chair.
Long-term possibility, would it be possible to permanently make two or three of the lower courts, pickleball courts, and still have three and two below for tennis?
Without doing a full conversion? There would have to be some kind of fencing to separate.
Okay, isn't fencing including in the proposal that you have for the, for the three courts up? No? Okay. Okay. No, that's not, is fencing included in the, in the project that is currently for the three upper courts?
Only the fencing to separate the courts.
In the middle.
If it's not, putting up another.
Okay.
Or 16, whatever that foot is.
Okay, thank you. Tournaments. Would tournaments happen simultaneously during summer camp hours?
The only two tournaments that we have scheduled, there are some Friday activities for those tournaments.
Okay. And what is, what would be the plan if that were to go forward? You have several hundred kids and if it's later in the day, you've got parents coming to get them. Even without tennis or pickleball, that can be a nightmare.
Correct.
How, what would be the plan?
So our plan is to keep half the parking lot reserved for camp and pool. So they would be marked off with warning that they will be towed if they're parked there. And then anyone using the pool would be getting a pool pass or a pool parking pass to put in their windshield.
Yeah, I guess I'm less concerned about the actual parking is the, in and out of that parking lot with young kids.
Greg, did we have a tournament last year?
We did, but there was, there was no, there was no Friday activities last year.
And that's my concern. If it was a weekend, it's different, you've only got the pool open. In a short-term resolution, while we continue to try to work this out, can the rec department do anything to facilitate setting up pickleball nets?
Sure.
So that folks who may not, it may not come so easy to set them up or have to worry about going through a combination and a lock. I mean, could we look at facilitating that?
Yeah, we could, we could set up nets and lock them. The nets are temporary nets and they will take a beating, but we do have nets that we...
So if you have scheduled pickleball, as I understand, what, Monday, Wednesday and Friday?
Friday, and then in the evenings, Wednesdays as well.
Is there staff that could help set up and break down?
Not necessary.
I heard from folks that there was.
That's the off, the off-hours they're talking.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
No, other than, I missed something then because that was a concern, right?
It is a concern if you want to go play with somebody else, not on the scheduled open play hours, which is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Wednesday.
Okay. That's not how I heard that.
There are 450 people.
Okay, great.
Unless they're provided enough, I have to worry about.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just make a quick note though, that I just, I want to get back to this idea that there, with the sharing that's gone on between the two courts, these are not dedicated, you know, there's zero pickleball courts, eight tennis courts. These are not dedicated tennis courts with the activities that have been gone on happily between us, but it's not true that there's eight dedicated tennis courts and zero pickleball courts because they're both, they're all fair.
So Mr. Bisson, can you, can you come before the board? I don't know, is two weeks unfair, our next meeting or maybe the first meeting in June? And present to us the feasibility of converting two or three courts at the lower end into pickleball courts?
Sure.
What's the difference?
The difference is, is that the upper courts were just relined and resurfaced for tennis.
All the courts.
Oh, they all?
Yeah. And, and the, and the resurfacing is done, has to be done every six years anyways because there are cracks that are still showing and eventually the whole courts will need to be re-ground down.
So all eight courts were done?
Yes.
Okay, because it's my understanding it was just the top?
No.
Okay. New nets and everything?
New nets, we were last year, yes.
Hampton poles, right? Can I interject that we also have to worry about the ADA part of it? And I know that's on our agenda after, but the timeframe and, and all of that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's part of this.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there any other place on four, between 4 Hampton Road and 10 Hampton Road that could house the pickleball courts, permanent pickleball, pickleball courts?
Currently, in this present state, no, because they're talking with DPW, there's a lot of site work and civil work that would need to be done at 10 Hampton Road before any kind of excavation can be done.
How many parking spots do we acquire with the new facility?
We have 50 parking spaces up there.
So with the new building, we have 50? What would, could we possibly look into what the cost would be then? The parking spots that are adjacent where the, the canister thing that goes on boats, what is that thing called? That's next to the pool and the water?
Tractor.
Yes, that, massive, that area where there's parking next to where the pool is and the spray park? I'd be curious to find out what the cost would be for paving, fencing in that nook since we're gaining 50 additional spots in the other location. Just so that we, you know, we can come to the table with lots of options and how many courts could be fit in that area. Because then it's still adjacent to tennis courts, it's still adjacent to primary location where people are going for, you know, it's new. I don't know, but I think it's better than just saying, you know, use temporary nets forevermore. So if we can look into what that costs in addition to other options that are on the table, I'd be curious to know if it's even feasible.
I'll, I'll definitely have to talk to Public Works about the, the traffic flow because now you're.
Well, yes, obviously, that changes a lot of things, but, you know, here we are.
No.
Hold on one second, but is there enough room there?
I'd have to take my measuring tape out, but it would be tight.
It would cut off quite a bit of the parking spots there, but we're gaining 50. So I'm, I'm just trying to think, without the cost of having to purchase a whole new property in town, before we say no, can we look into it?
Sure.
Yeah, and how many, we're just gaining 50, how many are we going to be losing to do this? I just want to know because that was a big deal, right?
There's 123 total spaces in the rec park, parking lot now. So you're probably eliminating 40 to 50.
That we just gained.
Possibly we're eliminating the ones we just gained, the same number?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we look into things.
Right, and that's why I'm advocating this.
Yeah, we don't know until we look into it and so.
Yeah, exactly. And survey, how long would it take to get a survey out?
We can get it out by the end of this week.
Is it reasonable to have you come back in our first meeting in June with multiple proposals?
Sure. Really? Okay.
Is there any parking agreement? I've always wondered if there's any, is there a parking agreement with access points made or is it at their pleasure? I'm not being a knee-buttler negativityist.
No, that's been a concern of mine for years, which is why I liked, yeah, no, there isn't.
There is actually, there is, there is actually none. They do not want people parking there on Fridays because of businesses.
And at any point in time?
Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
They can change that.
They would, they would be interested in the town signing, putting signage up basically, park here at your own risk.
Okay, all right.
There was a question, I think.
Yes.
She's surprised you're looking at all the proposals. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the section that you were talking about over by the pool with that storage container?
Yes.
Aren't there faring your condos right?
Yes.
They will not be happy with a place.
No, no one's going to be happy.
I think somebody said at the beginning of this meeting that not, not everybody's going to be happy. Real, real start.
That eliminates one proposal.
There we go.
They also say that we have authorized access Monday, Wednesday, Friday, which is great, but if people want to play on Tuesday and Thursday, Saturday and Sunday, get a group of friends, first one, that person needs to know, or a person needs to know that it'd be a combination to go in, open the box and everything. If that person doesn't know, he doesn't have access. So we have access three days of the week and pickleballs are growing.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Can we change that?
Well, that's, I think, put the phone number and have, you know, call in to.
Isn't there a camera on that anyway?
I think we can come up with a solution.
Can we, can we, I mean, for the time being, can we increase the time that folks have access to that?
Uh, you're, that's.
Talking about overtime and.
Right now, we have a dedicated group of volunteers that go out and do it.
Okay.
It might be burdensome to put staff designated and that's why a lot of my colleagues are experiencing the same thing, Mr. Chair. They're in a conundrum where there's so much time out there, they're spending dedicated on pickleball, setting up and taking down, that they're like, what do you, what do you, everyone's asking what they're doing and that's where a lot of them are like, we're just converting courts.
So Monday, Wednesday and Friday, you have volunteers that do it?
That's correct, yes.
It's not your staff?
Not my staff.
So couldn't you pick two other days to include, to add to the Monday, Wednesday and Friday and ask those volunteers to?
If we get volunteer, yeah, these are the volunteers.
And it doesn't need to have to be the same time, it could be the afternoon, you know, Thursday, Thursday in the afternoon, I mean, you know.
You're, you're stepping into a.
No, I'm trying to come up with a short term.
I know, but I'm just, I'm trying to give you a little warning that now we're entering into a realm of.
Negotiation.
A whole different problem where the two or three days that were accessible in the morning for tennis players now become inaccessible. So I, I think, I think figuring out a way to give people access to the code that's easy might be a first, a good first step.
It's not accessible to adaptive players.
I think, I think if you're going to do anything, you're setting up temporary nets that you know will be destroyed by the end of the season.
Well, I'll tell you what, when you come back in June, can you come back with some sort of a proposal that might allow?
Sure.
Additional days without, you know?
Interfering.
Canceling out tennis players in the mornings on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. Let's try to make it as equitable as we can.
Absolutely.
Sir, you have your hand up?
I do, just relative to the survey, if I may just ask.
Bless you.
One of the challenges, sorry, Jason Doris from Pine Street Exeter, relative to the survey, when you do put it out, I think I came to Exeter a little bit over a year ago not being a pickleball player, and if it weren't for stumbling into it, I wouldn't have found the community that I have. And so I just asked that when you worded, I would word it in such a way that somebody who maybe doesn't play today might be interested in it versus, versus whether they do, where they play, or questions that assume that they know what it is and it's accessible in town.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious about, that's the same for tennis.
I think, I think the survey needs to be for both.
Is he aware where to find tennis?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Bisson, you've, you've conducted multiple surveys in the past, so I have the full confidence that you will represent both sports fairly and.
And I think that. Sorry, I heard someone singing.
Somebody is singing in the back.
Yes, yeah, both, both sports will be represented in, in the survey.
All right.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Selectwoman Gilman.
Because I don't remember my arithmetic, can somebody tell me what the acreage is for the eight tennis, pickleball courts? Is it like?
What acreage of those?
Just for the courts and then the parking, we'll figure out.
121 by 160.
Well, I got that, but I don't, all right, I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I'm only asking because I, you know, looking for spots.
If you have a piece of property, you know?
Yeah, I know.
But when, in considering another piece of property too, we do have to take in consideration facilities such as parking and restrooms.
That's why I was asking about acreage, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm curious about the other established parks in Exeter.
I can't hear.
Like Gilman or.
She wants to know the other established parks in Exeter.
Could I have your, just your name for the record?
Barbara Keveney, 14 Exeter Farms Road.
Okay, can you, one more, I have to tell the recording second.
Barbara Keveney, 14 Exeter Farms Road.
14 Exeter Farms Road, Barbara Keveney.
Well, I was just, as part of looking at other spaces, what about the other parks in the area of Gilman Street?
Gilman Park is, is off the table because it's under a work plan with Selt. So there's nothing that can be developed there.
And I had asked the same question last week, there are other, other properties that are Parks and Rec where just parking would be, it just, it wouldn't work. So Mr. Bisson, we'll see you back in June?
June, yeah. Good.
All right. Appreciate everybody's input and feedback this evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Cool, and thanks for everyone.
It always sends me when everyone leaves after their topic is done. I mean, it just feels like, you know, we started together and together. I was just a starter, the agenda. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your email. Okay, not about this, about personal, I appreciate it, thank you.
How you doing, Kevin? Good, good to see you. Yeah, softball.
Oh no, we're still going, yeah.
I moved over to softball side, yeah. Yeah, very good. Yeah, good to see you too, good to see you, felt.
No, 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 we're just starting. Still going.
We need Greg for the next agenda.
What did they actually do, said to you?
So we, we still have other agenda items we need to get through, but you could go in the hallway? Thank you.
Hi, good, how are you? Good, see you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bisson.
All right.
You're still, you're still up.
Well, to address the ADA issue down on the lower courts, we have been diligently working to look at alternative solutions to make it accessible. We looked at building a ramp out of concrete, which was astronomically expensive because of all the drainage work. A plan to build a wooden ramp, which with the prices of lumber was astronomical as well. And then we have a aluminum ramp that will meet the accommodations to make it an ADA accessible ramp entrance. The only modification we need to do to the court is widen the gate. So by installing an ADA ramp on the lower courts, we would be able to offer adaptive programming down there as well. And then Townhouse Common.
Wait, 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 your motion. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Bisson?
I do.
Go ahead.
Five weeks, so once you ordered it, it would take five weeks?
Yep.
Okay. My question is, until we get a pickleball, is, I mean, is that going to change anything while we're looking at the pickleball?
No.
I just want to make sure the people at home who listen to this meeting know that, that that's not going to change anything.
Even, it would offer an opportunity even to add adaptive tennis if we had.
Perfect, thank you.
So this is just going to be a beneficial addition to the, the complex itself.
And the funding is coming from where, Mr. Bisson?
The Park Improvement Fund.
Park Improvement Fund, okay. And do we have the name of the company or no?
The National Seating and Mobility is the name of the company out of Concord, New Hampshire.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the purchase of an ADA aluminum ramp from National Seating and Mobility to come out of the Park Improvement Fund in the amount of $20,076.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Selectwoman Rantri Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blancher?
Aye.
Selectwoman.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next, Mr. Beeson.
Uh, we're looking at building a gazebo in Townhouse Common. In an effort to improve Townhouse Common, we are doing major upgrades. You passed, passed irrigation down there. We're looking to add a nice picnic gazebo and put it a concrete basin. Team has generously donated a $1,200 gazebo to be erected on the concrete pad. And we also have applied for an AARP grant that hopefully will here soon that will offset cost of adding some decorative lighting and safety lighting as well. We actually also looked at building a pavilion out of wood, and it's actually cheaper to build it off concrete. And this is stamped concrete, similar to what you see at Gilman Park and that, that pavilion there.
Mr. Beeson, is the gazebo appropriate size for public park?
Yes. Yeah, it's a singular one size. It's 12 by 13. It'll accommodate the eight-foot picnic table underneath that we have currently have there.
Is it permanent?
Yes.
So it stays in there year round?
The picnic table?
No.
Yep, it is permanent.
Okay.
The gazebo that you're showing has netting?
Yeah, it comes with netting. We wouldn't be putting the netting up.
I was just wondering if it was a...
No, we, we do not want the netting.
So it's New Hampshire winter proof?
Yes.
And how is the gazebo, how is the gazebo secured to the cement pad?
Uh, it is lagged down with lags, and PEA will be actually volunteering their time to actually construct it.
And where's, you have a nice picture of the sections, but like no reference point of like where is it to Court Street and Front Street?
Oh, uh, I don't have a map. It is located right, there was a picnic table that was affixed to the ground there. It's in the center where eventually we're going to have to finish because it's growing in. It's up the top of the hill, right at the corner of Bo and, I mean, not Bo, Court and Front Street.
Where the power supply is?
No, other side.
Oh.
Yep. There's a lilac tree next to it. That's someone that donated.
So it doesn't disturb the design of the center and park?
Nope, not at all.
Okay. So it's really just, it's just for picnicking? It's not for performance or anything?
We are going to use it for performance when we roll out our Toon and Fork Tuesdays. We have a food truck nights there on Tuesday nights with live entertainment.
So wouldn't it be better to place it where the electrical supply is?
Uh, we actually have electrical on that side as well, Julie.
Well, hidden, I guess.
DPW actually helped us put an electrical outlet for said performances.
Thanks.
And food trucks if they needed it, but we try to tell the food trucks to bring their own power supply.
Any other questions?
Do we have a lifespan on this? What, how long is this going to last?
Uh, 15 years.
It looks nice. It looks very nice, actually. Just this picture doesn't, it doesn't look, that's why I asked if it was going to be year round.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's made out of powder coated steel.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. It's in the historic district. So if it's a permanent structure, it would need to be reviewed.
Okay.
And the next meeting isn't until June.
Okay.
Just wanted to put that out there.
Is there a reason why?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Is there a reason why we're doing something like this instead of something like down at Swayze?
Uh, Swayze was $150,000.
Well, what do you, you want to call it? It is a gazebo. It's, we're, yeah. I'm sorry, what was the?
That, Swayze Parkway was $150,000.
Okay.
We're looking for a nice solution because we've seen a lot of uptick in people picnicking there, actually.
Okay.
Uh, the picnic tables have been a big hit. Going by this afternoon, there's at least three of them occupied with people eating lunch.
What do we have at Gilman? At Gilman?
We have one at Gilman as well.
Not this, so we have the same as we have down at Swayze or similar?
Similar to what we have at the rec park, but it has a concrete base.
Okay. Would that make a difference for the historic district on the structure?
I can't tell you. I sit on it. I'm not going to give an opinion.
Well, if it passes muster with the HDC, I mean, this is, this is nice looking and it's 1,200 as opposed to 150,000, so it's a generous donation, by the way.
It would be delayed though, because PEA can only install it between May 23rd and June 1st.
Right.
Well...
But it's part of the process, right?
Yeah, which we can, we can delay it and work a temporary solution till then, like a pop-up tent.
There, there is a road that I don't like to take, which is, being town, we can do with our property what we want regardless of the historic district boundaries. I really have no idea how this, what the opinion of the board would be on this. If it were temporary, that might make a difference, but I really hate to be the, the log in the flow.
So if, if, because they don't meet until after the June 1st, you said you could come up with a temporary solution to get through the summer, maybe Phillips Exeter could help when they come back?
I could go back to, I could go back to them and ask. I believe they can, but I can't speak on that.
No, 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 okay. So if you could just?
Well, I would recommend is approving the cement pad to have a, a flat surface, if that's possible.
I think, I think that would be possible.
And I would entertain a motion.
No, just, no, just give me a second.
So what if the, it's not, so you're saying that the historic society, oh, I'm sorry.
District. People get them confused all the time, and it's very different. One is regular and one is not.
But thank you for correcting me.
You're welcome.
If they don't approve it, and we're approving a pad, and we put the pad down?
That whole area needs to be refinished to, this is only step one, because there is a curve that comes around that is actually all grown in, that eventually will be either bricked in or concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you saw where I was trying to go with that, right?
This is still in the vision of finishing up the park, because right now that path is not in the greatest shape.
You also could approve it conditioned on the HDC approving it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thinking, great, we're going to put a pad down, and gets that, and then that doesn't happen.
You know, I actually like that idea. That way it does not come back to us.
Right.
Um, the HDC can address it and then...
Yeah.
Unless you...
No, the HDC meeting for the 19th is canceled, but there's nothing to say, hey, everybody, because there's not very many of us left, can you come on Thursday just for this one thing?
Sure.
And it'll take like 10, 15 minutes.
Okay.
So I will send an email now.
And, all right, so then, you need a motion to accept the donation from Team.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the donation from Team for a prefab, prefab gazebo valued at $1,200 to be built on the site of the cement pad, contingent on approval by the historic district commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
The clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And Greg, you need one for the concrete?
Yes, please.
Um, then contingent on the previous motion of accepting the donation of the gazebo, contingent on the historic, the historic district commission approving it, we would approve the Parks and Rec Department to expend $4,300 from?
Park Improvement.
Park Improvement Fund to go to the concrete pad being provided by Contrast Concrete.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. One more, Greg?
And lastly, the yellow shed in, excuse me, bronchitis, five weeks. Yellow shed demo in the rec park parking lot with the acquisition of 10 Hampton Road, we do have now access to that garage there. We'd like to move all the equipment out and tear that down before it falls down on itself.
Can we put a pickleball court there?
We may.
If you want to play with the cars.
But this will also not only remove a eyesore and a danger, but it will improve parking flow immensely.
Any questions?
No. No.
Then, I just, I'm sorry, I lost the...
Defrasio demolition.
Yeah, thank you. I'd entertain a motion, this is out of the Park Improvement Fund?
Yep, correct.
Entertain a motion to approve the relocation of several pieces of equipment and the demolition...
Of the yellow storage shed.
Of the yellow shed to be performed by De Frasco demolition for a cost of $2,400 expended from the Park Improvement Fund.
So moved.
Uh, okay, second.
Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Greg.
And I just, on the bottom is the balance, the current balance of $21,686 and 97 cents.
Okay.
And the Park Street Common Playground is arrived. Just wanted to give the board an update. So it is there. It is surrounded by snow fencing. We asked people to stay off it until it gets installed, which now looks like the beginning of June.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that should be shortly.
Can I ask one more update on something? How, the park benches, the painting, are they all done?
No.
So we need to get back there and finish painting.
Yeah, there's quite, quite a few. Andy Kloss and our Parks Foreman worked diligently during the winter months and, sorry, rehabbed quite a few of the benches, but there, there's over 200 benches we need to rehab.
Okay, so we need to contact you and set up some times to get access to the paint and whatever. We doing it and then?
There's, there's a lot to it. The boards need to be removed. The stands need to be sanded. We're spray painting them to last a little bit longer. And then new hardware to go in because all the hardware is now rotted out and it's hard time, and we're cutting, having to cut most of it.
So I'll be in touch. Maybe we can try to get people to volunteer times and whatever.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beeson. Okay, next, Mr. Dean, the bond document, bond documents for the fiscal year 22 bond issue.
Right, so what we need to do on this is the clerk can read or whomever on the board you choose to read the resolution of the certificate of vote regarding authorization of bonds. These are for the two bonds. Actually, one was approved in 2022, and the other one was approved in March of 2021. The first one is for groundwater exploration, and the second one is financing the purchase of the 10 Hampton Road property. So, so you just need to move the resolution through by reading it and then adopt it.
The whole?
Not, not the loan agreement, but just the three, I know it's still pretty onerous, but it's three pages of worth of a resolution.
Yeah.
Well, two, yeah, it's really just two.
All right, now you're getting me, so these two pages?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. This is a certificate of vote regarding authorization of bonds and approval of loan agreement with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. I, the undersigned clerk of the issuer, hereby certify that a meeting of the governing body of issuer or the board was held on May 9th, 2022. A quorum of the board was in attendance and voting throughout. I further certify that there are no vacancies on the board, that all members of the board were dutifully notified of the time, place and purposes of said meeting, including as of, as one of the purposes of the authorization of bonds and the approval of a loan agreement between the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, no, the Bond Bank and the issuer. I further certify that the following is a true copy of resolutions unanimously adopted at said meeting. Resolved that under and pursuant to the Municipal Finance Acts, Chapter 30 through, 33 NHRSAs amended, as amended, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank Law, Chapter 35-I NHRSAs amended, and other laws in addition thereto, and to votes of the issuer duly adopted on March 9th, 2021?
Right, that's right.
And March 8th, 2022, sorry, I forgot how many years we were doing. Under Articles 6 and 4 respectively of the warrants for such annual meetings of the issuer, there be and hereby is authorized the issuance of $2,250,000 bond of the issuer, the bond which is being issued by the issuer for the purposes of financing, one, developing groundwater sources, $4 million, and two, the purchase of land and buildings at 10 Hampton Road, AKA Q Central Building, including minor renovations to be used by the Parks and Recreation Department at $1,250,000. The bond shall be dated as of its date of issuance, shall be in such number and denominations as the purchaser, purchaser shall request, small, mature in accordance, or shall incur, gee whiz, shall mature in accordance with the schedule set forth in Exhibit A to certain loan interest cost as defined in the loan agreement of 4% per annum, or such lesser amount as may be determined by a majority of the board. The bond shall be substantially in the form set forth in Exhibit B to the loan agreement and otherwise shall be issued in such manner and form as the signatory shall approve by their execution thereof. Resolved that the board shall be, that the board shall be sold to the, the bond, sorry. Resolved that the bond shall be sold to the Bond Bank at the par value thereof, plus any applicable premium. Resolved that in order to evidence the sale of the bond, the treasurer of issuer and a member of the board are authorized to and directed to execute a test and deliver in the name and on behalf of the issuer, a loan agreement in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, which is hereby, oops, hereby approved with such changes therein not inconsistent with this vote, and approval by the officers executing the same on behalf of the issuer. The approval of such changes by said officers shall be conclusively evidenced by execution of the loan agreement by such offers. Resolved that all things heretofore done and all action heretofore taken by the issuer and its officers and agents in its authorization of the project to be financed by the bond hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. Resolves that the clerk and the signers of the bond are hereby recognized to take any and all action necessary and convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including delivering the bond against payment therefore. Resolved that the useful life of the project being financed is in excess of 10 years. I further certify that said meeting was open to the public. The aforementioned vote was not taken by secret ballot nor in execution, executive session. The notice of the time and place of said meeting was posted in at least two appropriate public places within the territorial limits of the issuer, or published in a newspaper of general circulation in said area, at least 24 hours, excluding Sundays and legal holidays before said meeting. That no deliberation or actions with respect to the vote were taken in executive session, and that the minutes and said, of said meeting have been promptly recorded and have been or will be made open to inspection within 144 hours of said meeting, all in accordance with Chapter 91A of the New Hampshire Revised Statues Annotated as amended. I further certify that above, the above vote has not been amended or rescinded and remains in full, in force and effect as of this date.
Mr. Dean, you just need a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to adopt the authorization of bonds and approval of loan agreement with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving into regular business. We have several evasions.
There's one, on the third one down, there's a typo. That should be 110 instead of 100.
For the map number, the third one?
Thank you, Joanna.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve tax abatements for MAP 110 Lot 283 in the amount of $95.09 for the tax year 2018.
Second.
The year is 2019.
Yes.
For the record, okay. Madam Clerk.
Oh, that's right. Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero, some of these can be-
Well, okay, they're different years, but, okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the following tax abatements for MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 22 in the amounts of $423.26 for the tax year 2019, $375.79 for the tax year 2020, and $309.65 for the tax year 2021.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 115 in the amount of $239.19 for the tax year 2020, and, and the same MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 115 and for $191.27 for the tax year 2021.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
And I make the fault, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 5 for the following years, $242.34 for tax year 2020, and $357.50 for tax year 2021.
Second.
Go ahead.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
Okay, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 71 for the following years, $237.85 for tax year 2020, 2020, and $349.95 for the tax year 2021.
Second.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
And I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 110 Lot 2 Unit 94 in the amount of $193.79 for the tax year 2021.
Second.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Permits and approvals.
There are two-
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, there are two address changes for Cullen Way that have been signed off by the applicants, so those are in a position to be approved now by the board.
Okay. Are there any questions in the memo from Deputy Fire, Assistant Fire Chief Peizon?
I have none.
Okay. You want these two separate motions, Mr. Dean?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to renumber 28 Cullen Way to 37 Cullen Way.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And I would also entertain a motion to renumber 26 Cullen Way to 41 Cullen Way.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? None, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rontree Oliff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Mr. Dean?
Yes, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
First of all, the tax warrant for the first half bills has been completed by the Tax Office and the Assessing Office, so I just wanted to express my thank you to Janet Witten and the Assessing Office and Rachel Lochner and the Tax Office for being so diligent in getting that warrant done. So it's here for signature and we'll be getting bills out. Usually it takes a couple of weeks before we're able to get the tax bills out to people. The bills will still be due July 1st as they always are this time of year. I attended a Governance and Nominating Committee meeting for the Health Trust last week in Concord. I was able to attend the Housing Seminar at the Town Hall last Friday, which went very well, and also attended the Public Safety, Public Input Session, May 4th at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. I am looking to meet with the representatives from the, I'm calling it the Stony Brook Development over in Stratum regarding water and sewer next week. We're working on the lease purchase documents for the SCBA and the Fire Engine 5 with TD Bank. And just a note that our congressional direct spending for Tenhampton Road was turned down by Congressman Pappas but is still alive with Senator Shaheen, so we'll see what happens on that side.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Dean? Okay, Select Board Committee report, Selectwoman Rontree Oliff, did you have-
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a correspondence I do have a question about, is that, or should I wait?
We're just gonna, I'm gonna get correspondence in a sec.
No, I didn't know if that was part of us, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
The only thing I have to report, other than state things, which you can do at the end if you'd like, as I went to the Housing Advisory Committee's regional conversation, and it was really very interesting, because there was one thing that I hadn't ever thought of, and that was that towns that don't have water and sewer and therefore can't, for the most part, build new housing, because they don't have the space, the capacity to have the water and sewer, that, that we're actually supporting them, now I'm getting myself confused, but we taxpayers or rate payers are supporting other towns because we have the facilities that share the same water table or the same water source, and I'm not explaining it very well. Yeah, we're, we're supporting other towns that don't have the same kind of facilities. Yeah. And I had never thought of it that way, that our water and sewer rates are based on other towns not doing their own cleanup. But it was very interesting, and I'll let you finish talking about that. I have several different things to go through, miles of pages of state work if you want to hear about it. It's 9:30. It's all on the website now, but mostly if it was a vote, a voice vote, it passed or failed as recommended by the majority, and if, and if it was a roll call vote or a division vote, same thing, was either 170 something to 150 something, or 150 something to 170 something. It was very hard, but we did get some victories, and I didn't highlight them except for with stars, so. They're all recorded on the webpage, the General Court webpage at this point. And the governor did sign, I'll say this one, the governor did sign the State Senate District MAP and the redistricting map and the Executive Council Redistrict Map, and Exeter has moved from District 23 to 24. It's changed its towns. We are now with Stratum, North Hampton, Hampton, oh, hold on, we have it up here. Basically, we moved out of the one that had Epping and Franklin and Danvers and, well, Danville. Sorry. I can do this real quick.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's not that map. I thought I could do it quickly. I put up too many things. It's actually very short to go away. There we go. All right, so we moved out from Brentwood, Chester, Danville, East Kingston, Epping, Fremont, Kensington, Kingston, and Newton, and have joined in with Hampton Falls, North Hampton, Ry, and Stratum, and Greenland. So it's a little funny.
Yeah.
And I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Always appreciate your updates.
Hmm.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Okay, so Tuesday, May 3rd, we had a Housing Advisory Committee work session for the forum that was Friday. On Wednesday, March 4th, I attended the first public forum on the public safety options. I also had two webinars for planning and zoning last Saturday and the Saturday before. This week, I have Conservation Commission tomorrow night, Planning Board Thursday night, and the regular Housing Advisory Committee meeting that's typically Friday, the 13th, has been rescheduled to the 20th. The ALYF, I said it right, Festival is the Saturday, May 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00. I won't get into all the festivities, but go to exeternewhampshire.gov, the town calendar, and view the events, and it will have all that information for you. And just to know, it's 9:00 to 1:00 at Founder's Park, however, there are other things going on after 1:00. There's a flyer with the participants, and the weather's looking pretty good, 72 to 80, and partly cloudy, so I just gave a weather forecast, too. The Housing Advisory Forum, this was televised, so Exeter TV did televise it along with the public, the first public forum, and so please, I encourage anyone, it was a great conversation, which is what the goal was, having conversations, and it really was incredible. I counted 47 people there and seven were people from the Housing Advisory Committee or department heads, so that was a good turnout.
Great, terrific.
And so, yeah, because it's getting late, I, I, go watch it, please watch it.
Yeah, and it was interesting that there were representatives from other towns, because this was dealing with Rockingham County, but it is a regional problem.
It is a region, it did come out, and I'll tell you just one thing that really, and it's not the highlight or whatever, but Chris Parker from Dover was the speaker, and one of the things that he talked about, he kept, Dover's been doing incredible things, attainable instead of workforce housing, you know, people get kind of hung up on labels, and attainable, he really made some great points about why to use that, and Commissioner Caswell from the state of New Hampshire talked about expanding businesses, and if we want to expand businesses, we need to have housing for them, and things like that. It really was a good conversation, and when we have our May 20th meeting, we'll decide next steps. Exeter Housing Advisory Committee might now step back and let New Hampshire Housing and Workforce Housing Coalitions take over. I don't know yet, but we've done what we were hoping to do.
Good.
So we'll see where we go, and I'll report back.
Thank you, great work.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Cowan?
I have no committee meetings to report, but I did have some outreach from a constituent who is concerned about the noise ordinance, and so I was hoping that we could hear, especially from police around car exhaust and motorcycle noise, because our, our noise ordinance addresses it, but it's not in depth, and I was wondering what other towns do, how it's enforced, if it is enforced. I know that there's been lawsuits in other towns to, you know, it makes it hard to go after folks when they, sorry, when they potentially, you know, are in violation of this, but at, at a future date, it would be great to have a, just an update from the police around what the enforcement of this is.
All right, I'm going to weigh in on this, because as a resident of High Street, which is, you know, Route 111 goes straight to Hampton Beach, and a select person, every new person that moves onto my street, which is at least annually, I get asked the same question, and I ask the police the same question, and I get the same answer, which is, it's pretty much unenforceable, because you need somebody sitting around with a decibel meter, and then they have to, the person making the loud noise has to prove it was actually them that was being pointed at. And we don't have the personnel to sit on High Street or whatever, you know, other loud thoroughfare we have, to just sit and measure the sound. And I've asked other selectmen from other towns, what do you do about it? And they said, you know, we have the ordinance, but, you know, there really isn't any way to enforce it. That's why you'll see, people have recommended, you know, put up signs to detour motorcycles to Holland Way, and we can't really do that because it's a state route. Both of them are state routes, and we can't limit that. And also, and that's all you'll see, the signs in a couple of places that say, be kind to the town, throttle down, because it's mostly aimed at motorcycles. So, that's my experience over 16 years.
Thank you.
And that's all I can say.
Mr. Dean, could we have maybe the police come just at a meeting in the near future to-
Sure.
Where, you know, several Select Board members who are approached, it'd be nice to just have that for the public record.
We can do that.
Great, thank you.
Hmm.
Thank you, Selectwoman Cowan, was that all?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I, too, attended the Public Safety Forum with Selectwoman Belanger and Mr. Dean on Wednesday, and look forward to several more, Mr. Dean?
Yes, we'll have more outreach.
Recruit some more participants. I counted about 10 that were not staff or-
One is the next one.
Mr. Dean, do you have a date for the next one?
I don't as of yet.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Get back to us on that. The Sustainability Committee met last Tuesday, and they are ready to finalize the ordinance for town property, single-use plastics that they'll bring to the board for three public hearings.
Okay.
Additionally, they will be setting up a booth at the ALYF Festival, and they have permitted Town Hall for later that afternoon, from 2 to, from 4 to 6, at which time they'll be showing some short films on certain sustainability issues, so.
I have one, one other thing. On Thursday, at the State House, we're having a guest speaker, Lech Walesa from Poland. We've never done that in my term, such, my terms there, and I'm just kind of curious that we have a union organizing Nobel Peace Prize winner coming to our, maybe it's a end of session, I don't know. Anyway, we're going to see him, and it's going to be interesting.
Thank you.
And it will be televised, so if you want to, you know.
Okay, even better.
Yeah.
Selectwoman Belanger, I go through the correspondence, but what question did you have?
Just about the academy. Do we normally pull streets down for their graduation, so the churches can't have their services?
Um, no, the churches would be able to have their services still. Which church are you, were we talking about?
Well, it had a rain date, right?
Right.
So, it, and it also had a different, two different options here.
Okay.
So, yes, if the second option happens, then there are two churches on that road.
Well, let me see what I can find out. This has been their typical request every year.
Well, according to Florida Day would be.
No, it's from Front Street at Tan Lane and Elm Street. It's the academy property, the congregational church.
So they're only going to notify the churches in case people need to park and get to their churches?
I don't know, we've done past. The only one actually that they can't get to is Elm Street. Or actually, no, they can get to Elm Street.
Okay.
No, the graduation's June 5th. Mr. Dean, could you look into that for our next meeting?
I will.
Thank you.
It's right there, they'll notify them.
Yep. All right, great.
Right.
No, that was a good, a good pickup.
Okay.
So, Mr. Dean, you'll, you'll have some-
Yes, I'll look into it.
Thank you. All right, we also have an award certificate from Arbor Day Foundation, the Town of Exeter Growth Award for Tree City USA. We have a letter of thanks from Southern New Hampshire Services- from Southern New Hampshire Services for this year's appropriation to the Rockingham Community Action. And I believe that is it. Board calendar, my memory, I recollect that we had some issues for the May 23 meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, Mr. Dean, we talked about meeting on Tuesday, May 24?
Right.
Does anybody have a conflict with Tuesday, May 24?
Nope.
I do.
You do?
Yeah, I've gone the 23rd and 24th.
Okay. And I believe, did somebody have a conflict on the 16th?
No.
Selectwoman Cowan, did you have a conflict?
I have a conflict on the 23rd and 24th.
So do I.
Okay. So it's either the 16th or the 30th is Memorial Day?
Mm-hmm.
Is the 31st available, Mr. Dean?
I can check, but it likely will be.
Yeah.
Available?
Yes.
Does anybody have a conflict for the 31st?
Nope.
We could meet next week, I just don't think, you know, we've given staff, we've given staff some, yeah, like to have the meeting meaningful.
That works for me.
31st works for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Dean, why don't we set that up, and then we can review the June calendar on the 31st? Does that work for everybody?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
That good for you, Russ?
Yeah, it should be fine.
Okay. Any other business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Come on in.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media...